So, uh, and now versus open or versus three-bet. So either we have the opportunity to three-bet ourselves, or somebody else already did and we have to four-bet or fold or call, right? So pretty broad, could be all kinds of random spots because we have different positions. We could be versus three-bet, it could be versus open. It's pretty broad, but mainly around the three-betting area. So I think we just dive into it. Good luck and have fun everybody. And feel free to, uh, play along in chat. Might be some tough decisions where I'm not sure what I would do. Feel free to, uh, guess along in the chat what you think is the best play. Would be much appreciated. Man, I'm so, I'm so, I'm so weirded out that my keyboard is without a cable. It's 2023, I know. I probably, I was probably the only one that used a cord still. But it's, uh, it's really nice. Uh, we are in the big blind with 24 blinds. I can't see a jam against the button, I guess the button we jam. Against the cutoff, he could also jam. At least a portion of the time probably. So it might be a little bit mixed between calling and jamming, I would assume. Because set mining, you know, the lower our stack is tougher it becomes. But I think for 25 stack, it's probably fine to call. Of course, we never fold. I think I jam sometimes. But I might be overwhelmingly calling here. And the cutoff people probably jam more and button we jam almost everything. I think. That's my guess. Oh, it's wrong, we jam. At least I consider jamming. Now that I called, we have to play the hand out. But I'm not sure if this is a GTO line that's useful to go through. Yeah, that's a problem with low pairs defending, right? You always hit a flop that you don't really like. We match the suits though. Which is sometimes good, but I, I'm not sure we can continue here. 67% fold. We do, uh, what do we do more? Oh yeah, flop, we can just check, uh. I was worried about pre-flop. Yeah, we don't, we don't jam 100%, we raise seven blinds, wow. I'm very confused about that. What if we raise to seven and he jams? We have to call, right? We're always committed. I would, I would never think to jam, to not jam all in here if I raise. It's a bit of a weird line to me. Let's see what, uh, let's dive into this. But what if we three-bet small? From the big blinds? Um. Yo Bullets! Happy Tuesday to you too. Uh, so here we raise to seven. Of course, the hijack falls. The thing is what, uh, on a hijack doesn't fold, the hijack goes all in, right? Then it's the question, what do we do? Scooby Doo, what do we do? Yeah, then we always call. So that was my assumption that if we three-bet small with a pair, we are committed. We have to, always have to call. But I'm, but I'm surprised GTO likes that line. Like what do we gain with that compared to just jamming ourselves? Well, we gain that the hijack sometimes jams a weaker hand, right? Is for suited. Is doing bad against our force, but we block it heavily, so it's not really likely. Ace five suited is more likely. I'm, I'm still confused. But it's okay. First spot of the night, let's move on. Welcome Pretentious Possum. First head of the night was pocket force. I, uh, I thought it was mixed between jamming and defending. But the correct answer was always raise. I was confused that it's sometimes three-bet small here. From this stack. I didn't, I didn't think that. Eight seven suited versus under the gun. I think this is, uh, especially this deep, this is probably a pure call. You don't have a big, uh, three-bet range against under the gun. Um, I think this is pure call. Or at least big time. Okay, I'll take that. I'll take 84%. And under the gun checks. So what do we think he checks with here? It's a couple of those, uh, showdown hands that don't want to build a big pot like pocket kings. Maybe some queen ten or something. But on this board, I'd assume he checks, he bets a lot of those hands as well. So it kind of favors his hand. So I'm not so sure if I would want to bet here. Against population, I would want to. If my opponent at a $10 tournament checks from under the gun here. It's a team that comes back a lot, right? That they don't protect their, uh, checking range well. So if they check here, they're, they're weaker than they should be. But they don't check enough with their pocket queens and ace ten type hands. Against that type of player, we want to bet a lot here. Um, but against GTO, I'm not so sure. It could also be lots of traps. Check raises a lot probably with even ace king or ace queen, right? Uh, yo Alex, how you doing? Maybe we can play some Tetris later if you're still around. I was, I was, I was hoping for that, but we'll see if people are around for that. No one wins without a bet. Yeah, if you redeem that now. I guess we have to check raise, but, uh, I am not in the position to check raise here. I mean, I'm in position Alex, so I cannot check raise. But I will bet. Okay, betting is a mistake, or at least this sizing is a mistake. We'll see, uh, what happens if I continue this hand and then we'll look into the options. Um, overbet is here an option. Uh, I like that. I kind of like it. Okay. Thanks for offering that option. So I think I would not play a six this way. It's kind of a problem here that I would not, probably not play a six this way. And I do block diamonds. And he has a lot of ten x in his range probably, so I don't think we should bluff this river. I think the six is bad because we don't bet the six on the flop, we just take it back. And he would check a ten on the flop in position, out of position. He has tens and we have, and we have no sixes. Okay, I, I thought that out correctly, I guess. We give up the bluff. What I'm wondering mostly is the flop here. Um. Oh, we bet larger, okay. It's check and larger bets, okay. I can, I can handle that. I can handle that. But the betting was not a, not a bad idea per se. But, uh, we should bet larger, okay. Let's move on. Hey, welcome back into the streamer body. I did some introduction earlier, but I don't know if people heard it. I have a new keyboard. And it's wireless. And it's from Logitech, which is a good brand. And, uh, I hope I can do 15 years with it. And the fun thing is if I type in chat now, you can hear it. You can't hear this! I can type silent now. I think it's so much better for the stream. Because I was always annoyed that I couldn't really filter that out in the stream. Now I don't have to filter it out anymore. Uh, welcome Little Vakiria. No, you couldn't, you couldn't hear it. Maybe when I was talking, Pretentious Possum. Let me not speak while I type. You cannot hear that because it's not picked up by the mic. If you, if you heard it, if you heard it, you're, you're, it's on your, it's on your brain, it's in your brain. You see, you used to hearing me type. Yeah, this was $30 supposedly dog. This was not a super big investment. But for keyboard, it was, you know? For keyboard, it's a pretty big investment. Yeah, I also hated that I had, I also hated that I was using a loud one, Fain. How you doing? Okay, let's continue the, the GTO wizard grind. Oh, you were kidding anyway. I like, I like you, Pretentious Possum. You got me sort of. Yeah, because if I'm speaking, I can't really see from the meters if, uh, something else picked up, right? Because it will already be my voice. Um. Ace eight suited for 20 blinds against under the gun. Easy jam against later positions. But against under the gun, I am not super sure we should jam this a lot. Uh, we still have fault activity of course against the bottom of his range. His king queen off suits, king jack off suits. We can also make him fold a better ace, like he fold, probably folds ace ten off suit and ace jack off suit. So in that regard, we could jam here, but I prefer call. Okay, 100%. We have most expensive electronics in the world? Who, who has the most expensive electronics in the world? I don't, I don't. I just slowly upgrade stuff and to make this stream even possible. And we flop trips from the big blinds. And against a small bet here. This is probably the thing that we can get in, we can get it in on this, on this run out anyway, right? Because it's so short, SPR is low. We don't need to really build a pot. So maybe we call the first three to make him bluff the turn again. If I raise here, I could raise to like three. And make him still call with some hand like kings or spade draws. I kind of like a call here and then maybe check raise the turn. 12% only, wow. I was wrong. I was trying to check raise Alex. Okay, we're gonna clear that goal, sorry. It's not, uh, it was not, not really meant to be on for tonight. So many things I have to update always when I switch between stream types like Russian Cash Friday, MTTs, studying, and it's always 15 things I have to change. Um. What happened? Oh yeah, I called and then we, yeah, then we checked the turn, I guess. But we should, we should have raised the flop a big portion of the time. And the point is not really favorable for us anymore to like really build a, build, jam like, if we jam here, he has all the ace ten, ace jack, ace queen, ace king, tens. Has all that in his range and his range is strong, so his bluffs are lower. And he has flushes now as well. Because I'm sure he bets the flushes on the flop as well. Of course, we never fold, but I don't think raising is great here. Doesn't really get better, huh? Okay, we get to showdown, probably win. Nice. Welcome Anaconda. Good evening sir. Do you have friends who also play poker for money? Uh, of, of, of course I have, yes. I have a lot of friends who play poker for money. And a lot of them play poker with me on the stream or alongside my stream or, uh, against me on the Russian cash tables on Friday night, so yeah, definitely, uh. Definitely. But we, uh, we start the stream with, uh, like maybe an hour of GTO wizard. I want to keep that in as a regular thing on Tuesdays. But we started a little later today because I still had to go to the shop to get my new wireless keyboard. Gonna show this like every five minutes because I'm happy with it. Um. We are focusing on three-bet pots Anaconda, but I, it's a pretty wide range of situations that I selected. But it's mostly three-bet spots. Either we are, uh, three-betting ourselves or we have the opportunity to three-bet. And like in this spot, right? Um. I would call a lot here. So what, what, what is our range doing here? Like, how often do we want a three-bet here? Do we have three-bet faults from this sizing, from this stack size? I struggle with this stack size, so this is a good, uh, spot to dive into a bit more. 25, 30 big blinds. I always struggle with, uh, with check raise bluffs and with check raise folds. Like if I have like king queen offsuit here, I, I feel bad. Three-betting and folding to a jam, right? Because we are also committed and we're, we're almost pricing ourselves in, but not really, right? So that's an interesting, uh, consideration here. I think this hand plays fine as a call. I think it's strong enough to call. I think what I remembered from studying is that suited eights basically always defend on the button. Um. And in the small blind and the cutoff, it's suited nines. That's a good, uh, good threshold to remember. On the button, you, you defend suited eights as the bottom of your range. And small blind and big cutoff to positions next to it, suited nines. If, and that's of course in generalization, but there are different situations where, you know, you deviate a little bit. I think we call. Long story short, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it's supposed to kick my ass, Pringles Poker. How you doing by the way? It's supposed to kick our ass, so we can learn from it, right? We can learn what, uh, what good ranges are in general. I feel like my screen is really placed today. I definitely disconnected earlier today because of the new laptop and, uh, everything, the new keyboard, not the new laptop. This is better, right? So we called on the button. It's not really a flop where we can start betting it. Oh, really? We do start betting? Here we're getting crushed already. Uh. I mean, we have a gut shot, but I wouldn't really be inclined to like start bluffing with jack high here. I'm interested in it. I'm interested here at the flop. But we check 42%, we bet 58% of the time. On this king queen four board, you start betting if the cutoff checks. I mean, I'm just not aggressive enough in general, maybe, you know? Um. I would never find this spot. Like if I have a spade for sure. If I have a spade, then of course, like. And the fun thing about this spot is that, we talked about this a couple of hands ago. If the cutoff has a weak checking range, which is probably true in my games, like the cutoff poorly and sometimes they trap like top set here of course, but that's just what GTO, GTO also does. So that's not, that's not deviation, but what the cutoff probably doesn't do here is check a lot queen x, right? Or pocket tens or something, like, no, maybe pocket tens would check a lot. I'm just thinking about what a recreational player would do here as the three-better in the cutoff spot. But open a spot in the cutoff. Um. My point is that if GTO bets a lot here, against population, we should probably not bet less. Often, we should probably even battle more often. Because we have more fault equity, I think, against a weak checking range. So that's a takeaway here, so even on a, on a pretty unfavorable board, like, hmm. It looks unfavorable because we have no spades. But the king and the queen are, are high up in my range, I guess. Like I would flat with king queen suited, king jack suited, queen jack suited, right? I would also call a lot with those hands. So I guess we have a lot of king x and queen x in our range, but he has them as well, right? I, I don't think we have a range advantage here. We could look this up. Quickly look this up. And if I'm talking, uh, some sense here. I don't want to collect a flop, we already had a flop. I'm not gonna select a flop, we already had one. The king queen four. Why can't I study that spot? There you go. So on the king queen four, if the cutoff checks, we should, we should bet a lot. And of course it mixes, but what I'm looking at is the ranges here. Um. This one, ranged equities. Um, but the button has a slight advantage. Okay, this is the interesting spot, uh, part. And that's why we can bluff with a wide range after they check. We have equity advantage here. It might not seem significant, but 51% is an equity advantage. And this is why GTO likes to bet a lot. So we have a lot of those king x and queen x. We have the better, best hands. And, uh, almost as much as good hands, also more trash, like check nine. Um, okay. I don't want to dive into every spot for 30 minutes, but seemed interesting to, uh, check out. Let's go to the next hand. Uh, Anaconda says, sorry, I should also read chat. If you only bet with a spade, you are exploitable. Yes. Of course, but, uh, we should probably be inclined to bet lots of, uh, spades, right? Um, not only with, uh, with spades, of course. Yeah, that's a good point. But I mean, I would also bet for value with a queen and a, with a king with no spade, right? Um. So that way we can also protect our range a little bit if there, if there comes another spade, you know, or not. Yeah, we flatted off broadways and, uh, and, um, middling suited connectors like jack ten, jack nine, queen ten, queen jack. So yeah, we, we kind of hit this board. We also flop flushes, right? We might even have more flushes than the cutoff. Um. So yeah, that's why we have a slight range advantage here. Yeah, and that's what I'm always trying to like, at least talk about for a little bit in these GTO sessions is that how should we deviate against population? Because we know they are more, they're more passive. They're not betting enough. And sometimes when they check, they're really capped. And you should attack capped ranges, right? That's our goal as, as exploit a lot. Alright. I hope, I hope you guys can learn something from these sessions. And if I make, if I talk trash, please tell me. Because then, uh, I, I don't, I'm not a god either, you know? I make mistakes as well, so. It's assumed in a lot. This one? I don't know. Oh no, man, this looks good. Shout out to Pringles Poker while I take a sip of coffee. Of course, that, uh, you don't have, you don't have a clip? Or, or it's broken again? I don't know. It doesn't play a clip. Hey, this is sort of similar. Oh, you have no clips. Yeah, that explains it then, yeah. I, I will be confused about this a couple of times in the future again. I, I, I can already announce that. Um, this is another spot where I would hate three-bet fault here, right? So we don't do that. Like if we three-bet, we should call with a hand as strong as this. Against the jam. Of course, not if two people jam, but but I think this is also a spot where this is just a good call. Like this hand plays so well post-flop. I'd rather three-bet king jack offsuit, for example. I think. Okay. GTO seems to agree. And we hit, uh, two of cards and a straight draw. I would be very inclined to keep betting on this board. I'd be very inclined to keep betting. Don't have to go big, I think small. If they jam, we call, like we have enough equity even against top pair with this hand. Um. Jack ten rainbow, yeah, I think it hits our range well enough. Of course, he has the accent tens and overpairs, which we don't, so the logic has still nut advantage with more pairs than hit sets and overpairs, but we still had a lot of pairs here. I like a bet. 50% of the time. Good enough. And the other options are checking one third and betting different sizes. Yeah. I don't really, I don't really want to dive into the bet sizings too much. I'm already quite happy if I get the gist of it right, like bet or fold or bet small or bet big, right? But there are of course situations where we want to bet 20% or 30% or 40, 50. But this is the most chosen option anyway, so I'll take that. I'll take that. Queen jack offsuit for 20 blinds against the min raise on the button. My first instinct is this is probably good enough to jam. Good evening Giorgio! How we doing? Welcome to the stream. This is placed bad as a call because it's, it's out of position, queen jack offsuit, I don't like it. Uh, the question is how weak do we jam here? I think queen ten offsuit is borderline here. I think we bet, uh, I think we, I think we jam this. Okay, 76%. Good enough. So that means that we'll be flat sometimes apparently. Yeah, we do flat sometimes. I would hate flatting here, pre-flop, right? Against the min raise from 20 blinds. I would, I would never do that in game, but jamming is fine. You can make better hands fold. Like, uh, well, not that many though, but some suited kings and stuff like that, right? Suited kings and some, uh, offsuit ace five or something that's falling still. Okay. We're not doing too bad. Poker summer school, yeah, sort of. Every Tuesday we try to do this, Giorgio. GTO study school. It's also a YouTube series I'm creating. I post all these, uh, GTO sessions on YouTube. They're getting quite some views. And I even make some GTO wizard sales with that, so I got some, uh, I got some, uh, interest in that as well myself. Alright, uh, let's move on. Against under the gun, we don't continue with suited king three. But the question is, before we fold yet, what's the weakest hand we'd call here? I think you'll be surprised how weak of a suited king we can call here. 100 blind deeper against under the gun. My instinct says king seven suited or something. Maybe even king six suited. I wouldn't love it. But I think GTO calls pretty wide with suited kings. I'm gonna go king seven suited. As our weakest king suited we call here. King eight suited is no, is, is, is for sure. King eight suited is another question. I think king seven is might even be a call. Any takers? Any gamblers on this? What do you think? Oh yeah, we're folding this hand, Anaconda. We're folding this hand, but I'm wondering what, uh, uh, that the weakest suited king is, we would continue here. And I think it's king seven suited maybe. Hey Johnny Lawford, welcome to the study stream. We're gonna play some poker later, by the way. Gonna play some hypers or something. I'm gonna play a little bit of poker. But not a, not a huge session. So yeah, that's my guess yet, king seven suited. Let's check if, uh, we made some sense. But let's hope we made some sense. Uh, what are we talking about? Oh, we need to go to strategy, yeah. Okay, it's king seven suited and king six suited mixed, okay? I, I can give myself a go on that one, right? So these are the weakest hands we continue with against under the gun in the small blind. And I think it's pretty wide. Suited nines I can live with. But these suited kings, that's always a surprise to me. Hey Mr. Carbs! Welcome to the stream. We haven't missed much, mate. We haven't, we haven't missed much, but I have, you have missed that I showed my keyboard. I can do it again though. It's wireless. My new keyboard. It's not fancy, but it's super, it types super well. I really love typing on this one. I think I'm gonna write a book tomorrow. I can type on this very nicely and it's silent. You can't hear me type when I'm saying something to somebody in the chat. And I always find it so annoying when people, uh, can hear me type, so I'm super happy with that improvement. Yeah, don't give Mr. Carbs the secrets. He's gonna, he's gonna store them so secretly and so say that he can't even, uh, get to them himself anymore. He might spend a day to get them, get it all back. Um. Ace eight suited, I think I had fault. I think the, I think button versus cutoff, we call ace nine offsuit. As the weakest hand. So I think against the hijack, we go, we don't go wider, right? So I think this is a fault. Okay, cool. You have no speakers plugged in or headsets, but my computer is somehow omitting sound and I don't know where. If, if that happens to me, it's my laptop, uh, speakers, but, but you're not having a, you're not using a laptop, so. My laptop has speakers, but I'm, I'm almost always using, uh, these earplugs, these, uh, yeah, I use. And I, and I plug those in my, in my screen, which also has sound. So I got three options for sound. Laptop, the screen and, uh, these ones. But yeah, I don't really know, uh, what your situation is, of course. Hey Marty! Welcome, uh, my friends. Shall we listen to some clips later tonight? Any, any clips for, any music clips later tonight? This is a very clear defense. It's not the, it's not the, yeah, the keyboard, the keyboard is awesome, Marty. I've been showing it off. Not that it's looking so great, but it's awesome. And it's especially awesome because, yeah, because it's wireless. And it's silent. But I can type a lot and you guys won't be annoyed by it, which is a good stream improvement. So we flop trips here. I'd like a check raise here. Yeah, it's a Logitech, uh, wireless silent one. I don't even know the details. Logitech. I'm, I always go with Logitech. It's also my mouse, it's my keyboard. Uh, I like the, I like the brand, so I went to the media mark and, uh, they had Logitech stuff, a lot. And this is, this was the cheapest silent one. And I didn't really care about wireless, but almost all of them have wireless, so I just went for it, I literally went for it. Uh, trips we often raise here, right? We want to build a pot for Super Team. It's not, it's not the wrong sizing apparently, but we'll see about that. And when the flush completes, what I remember from GTO trainings in the past, is that we want to size down often. Like if this was a heart, which adds another flush draw, I would bet, I would size up, right? Because the draws increase, I would like overbet here sometimes. But when the draw completes and there's not another draw coming, um, we often size down, I think, maybe half pot, maybe seven. Because they'll get value from a pair. But it's getting a little thinner, right? Getting a little thinner to get value from non-ten x. I think a half pot. Okay. We get a green check mark. But I'm mostly interested about, uh, the flop sizing? Yeah, our sizing was wrong, but raising is totally fine. Uh, we should raise smaller, okay. I'm always inclined to raise quite big from the small blind, from the, from out of position. But I, I went to 7.5, which is not even 4x. Right? It's not even 4x his, his range, not even eight. But it's still too large according to GTO on this board. Um, we go to, uh, 5 point something. I'll take it. I'll take it chat. Hey, welcome everybody, uh, to the study stream. I'm gonna do this for about 90 minutes or so and then we'll switch to some other content, probably poker related. Your keyboard has wire and it's kind of loud. You're crushing me. Well, there's probably lots of, lots of things where you crush me, uh, Pringles Poker. There's lots of spots where you crush me probably. I still stream from a laptop and I hate it. It's doing its job though. We, we're managing. But, uh, it's not the best, uh, way to stream. Yours has pretty lights. I've seen those, I've seen those keyboards, but, uh, I, I'd rather go for the silent option and the wireless option than the, the, the pretty lights option. Didn't really see that as useful. Yeah, I think that's true, Pringles, especially in my moment in my study career, like it would not matter too much if I, the idea to raise trips there is fine, right? And especially against a weak opponents, we want to value bet the hell out of everything, right? So you trap less often at low stakes, I think. Because people don't Because people don't build a pot for you. Hey Storm. Hey, you're early today. Or should I say late, because lately I've seen you say hi at like four AM a lot or three, three thirty AM? Even in Killingbird stream, uh, Sunday night. Or Monday morning, I don't know. Thanks for the thirty-six months mate. Let's get that sub train driving. Uh, ace seven offsuit, the question here is how wide do we defend against under the gun? From this stack size, I'd hate defending as weak as ace do is offsuit, I'd fold that. But I think this might be too strong. So I think I'd defend this, but I think I'd fold the weakest offsuit aces. Okay? It looks like we're on the right track. Do we have, do we do anything here? Wow, that's so small, but. Out of position with no runners except to run a straight draw, I guess. I still think we have to fold this. Yeah, okay. That's okay. So pre-flop, let's look at the range chat, how wide do we defend big blind versus under the gun? I think we fold the worst offsuit aces. We don't, pardon me. That's probably because we're so short. Which means high card value is more important and suitedness is not so important. Well, we still call with all the suited hands as well. Because we should defend in a big blind, super wide, right? We defend all the suited hands. And even as weak as nine six offsuit, we defend against under the gun, wow. That is mind blowing to me, that's super wide. I'd consider folding ace six offsuit here, right? And we probably shouldn't because our opponents. Are not. Uh, opening wider than this, right? If anything. Your recreational player under the gun. Might open a bit more pairs, I think that's, that's quite common, that they are, that they open every pair. Even for early position. But they will not find these opens with king eight suited probably. Ten eight suited. Even king nine, queen nine suited, I. I'm not sure if every recreational opens these under the gun. So overall, I think they will not open wider, yeah, if it's a maniac, right? If it's just a maniac playing every hand, then. They might open every, every broadway, every ace, whatever, but. In the general sense, I think this is a fair. Range for recreational, but it might open more pairs and less suited hands. That should not change our calling range too much, that's my point. So I guess in game, I should also defend every offsuit ace from now on. But I'm not comfortable playing it out of position postlop, that's the problem, right? That, that is where we should learn as well, like how do we play postlop with a, with top pair or. You know, when we, where it gets under the gun, like how's our pair ever good, you know? But that's tough, but that's what poker, what makes poker so exciting as well, I guess. Next hand. Hey, we had this pot already, it's a fold. Ace ten offsuit probably is the border there, we'll move on. Lower the music a little bit. Uh, this is a clear defense. It's early this time for Storm, yeah. You just, you also said good morning at four AM, but I don't even know what early and late is with you. But you're always welcome, Mr. Storm. Sometimes it's better to fold the bottom parts of your range. If you're not comfortable with the weaker hands postlop, yeah, you can, you can save yourself from trouble, right? But. The long-term plan should, uh. Should be to learn how to play those heads postlop, so we can adjust and actually call wider pre. Uh, I check call this flop any time of the week. Uh, because we never check raise on this board against under the gun. Like, well. With a flop straight maybe. We have some queen jacks in our range, but. We have no aces, no kings, no tens, tens might, we might have some tens. We don't really check raise a lot here, right, only with a couple really strong hands. And, yeah, GTO balances that probably with some. Uh. Flush draws or something, or pair with good shots, well, we have a pair with good shot, hmm. Now it's getting interesting. Now it's getting interesting. But the question is, do we check raise here sometimes with a hand like this? Yeah, the undergun bets big. Because this is a good board for under the gun, right? So he has range and nut advantage, so he's supposed to bet often and large. And against that, we have no real defense than just calling here, I think. I don't think we should check raise ever here. With a hand like this, I think. Yeah. Yo Mister Carb, what are you doing man? I, I don't know if you can hear me, because you had, you had no sound earlier. Now your mouse is not working, what is going on? Didn't you just get that PC back? Sometimes it just, uh, takes some time to set everything up well again, right? Yo Kattulu. I'm okay, I'm okay. I'm glad that I, uh, fixed my keyboard issue, which prevented me from streaming. And I was very, I was up very late today, so I had to hurry for it. That's why I started a little later, but I'm happy I did it, we are here, um. It feels a little too tint for a blocker bet. For a tiny value bet. Um, he could have something like nines. Is he calling with nines here, if he bet here? I don't think, I don't think so, so I think bottom. I think ten X is, is too weak to bet here. Especially against under the gun, who has still some traps here maybe sometimes. Best move, we still lose the hand, but. It's very logical for him to play king queen this way, like after we called a flop. He doesn't really wanna build a big pot. Seems, seems very reasonable. Hey Cools, welcome, welcome. Seems very reasonable, everybody. I like reasonable, we can, we can understand that, you know? Easy call, uh, not a stack size, we wanna raise trees here. Set mine in, and then, yeah, we should continue also, sometimes we don't do it, it's that, I guess. Maybe that's our, our lesson here. What do we do with under pairs here? If we don't flop a set. Uh, we have the right suits. Sort of. But I'm not sure it does a lot. But maybe that's the border, like. Call with a spade, yeah, call one time, yeah, I'd hate it though. I'd hate it, but I think with the spade. On a maybe, maybe on a less favorable board, like on ace queen seven, we don't do it. Or ace queen ten, we don't do it, but on this board. Where he doesn't have too many six or five X. We should probably continue, yeah. Okay. I'm looking at the, the range in a bit, what our calling range is there. Now we turn a straight draw. We don't lead here, I think. Oh, we do sometimes, okay. I guess we have more straights and stuff, and two pairs. So we're supposed to bet that turn, uh, quite a bit. On that four X. So yeah, we do have some six four that plays that way, some five four. The check calls the flop. We make some two pairs on that four. So yeah, maybe we have some seven eight, so I, I guess it makes sense to start betting on the four. It's a decent card for us. Of course, now when the ace comes and we neglected to bet, we have to check again. We can bluff on the ace. We do, uh, lose the hand against king six. But we might be able to get him off a six if we bet the turn here, right? Pre-flop was fine, uh, flop. I was wondering on the flop, uh, what our calling range is. Under pairs are tough to continue with. So big blind tax. Low jack bets, what do we do then? This is our range after the. Low jack c-bets. It looks like a big chaos. That's where, and that's the, that's what you always wanna do then, is go to filters. And check for thresholds. This is what I learned in a GTO wizard video. Hey Moose. Hi. Welcome to the stream, thanks for the subscription. I will, uh, repeat what I was trying to explain. So, this is a GTO wizard study night. We're looking at a specific spot here where we are calling pre-flop on the big blind. On the queen six five board, the big blind tax. That's us in this case. We have a c-bet from the low jack, what do we do, this is our calling range. And then you might think, oh, this is so complicated, I'll move on, this is too, this is too complicated. It's not that complicated, but. We just look, what we're looking at here is what, what, what do we start folding? You can see that on the filters on the right, so this is all green, so we never fold pairs. Like low pair, third pair, second pair, that's all the six X and five X. We never fold that against a small c-bet. On the flop, we never fold a pair. Very easy to remember, never fold a pair. And then where the threshold becomes interesting is ace high. We start folding ace highs. Our weakest ace highs fold here. So the ace highs without the spades. You know, ace highs that have no runner straight or runner flush draw, those fold. And then I was also looking at the under pairs, right, like trees and doos, they, they all will call here. I expected only calling with spades, but we call everything. On this board, right? But if we change this board to say, uh. The five is not a five, but an ace. I'm pretty sure our calling range tightens up. There you go. This, and this is, this is completely, uh, what I expected. On this board, we don't continue these pairs. Fives, doos are now getting folded. You also see that in the thresholds here. Third pair. Starts folding. Six X starts folding, instead of ace high as our threshold, third pair starts folding. This is because this board is so bad for us. Sometimes I think I might be onto something in this poker game. Sometimes I know what I'm talking about, it's not, it's not that often, but. It doesn't, it doesn't happen that often, but it happens, it happened here. It's a rare occasion. That I made some sense. Let's go, put your songs in the queue, everybody. Um. Easy call. So we are again against, uh, under the gun here. We flop literally the nut low, we can't do anything here with six high with the wrong suits. We move on. Sometimes you just gotta check fold, even yet, GTO does that. Uh, suited sixes in the small blind, no. We start with suited eights, suited nines. So we fold. Ace five suited in the big blind, so we know GTO loves ace five suited. So it probably mixes in some pre-bets here. So let's do that. Fifty-two percent. And now we have a three bet pot where we are the three better ourselves, we haven't had that many of those today yet. I'd be very inclined to c-bet this board. Of course it helps we have the spades. But if we wouldn't have the spades here. This might be a check. We should check out of position quite a bit often, right, as the pre-flop racer? But a three bet pot is a bit lesser for thing. I think our c-bet range out of position in three bet pots is a little higher than in single raise pots. Um, but I'd be inclined to bet here, so let's just follow that logic, that, that's. I, if I'm playing this spot as a three better, I'm, I'm, I'm betting, you know? We probably also, I, I three bet from the big blind. I three bet from the big blind in this spot, and the hijack called us. So we can make him fold lots of, uh. Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, we can make him fold lots of broadways that miss this board. The problem is ace high is already ahead of those hands. So, can we actually make better hands fold? Well, yes. Ace eight, ace nine, ace ten. You know? Now I'm wondering if I would bet here without the spades, that's the question here. But this specific hand, I'm sure we bet. Um. There's no one third option, I think I'd like fifty percent best here. I like, I mean, okay, that's interesting, only six percent uses this size. And now we are in trouble. Now we are actually in trouble. If a bit more than one SPR left and the queen doesn't do anything for us. Will he call with queen X sometimes? Not that often, like. What if he has king queen of spades, wouldn't he jack raise all in, wouldn't he go all in on the flop? Queen jack, queen king, ace queen of spades. I think he check raises all in a lot with those hands. So how often does he have a queen? Not that often. And we, we still have queens, kings and aces in our range as the three better. So I'd assume it's a kind of a good card for us. Um. But we already fucked up our sizing on the flop apparently, so we are in problems scenario here. What do we do here chat, what do you guys think? We can go all in. It's only a slight overbet. I kinda like it. I kinda like going all in here, I kinda, I kinda like it, if he bets small here, like. What's our plan on the river, you know? I don't hate jamming here, but the problem is with ace high. It's like we never get called by worse, we're basically turning our hand to do a semi bluff. Which is fine, we have, we always have outs. But. I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about this, we're, we're looking into the solution in a bit. Well, it was a load, Marty. But I'm not sure if it's fucked or not. I think it's okay. I think it's okay, Marty. Uh, I'm, I'm all in. Wrong, I was kinda afraid of that. We fucked that hand up chat. Eighteen percent GTO, pre-flop was fine. Flop. Our sizing was wrong. We do check quite a bit. Um. And we bet large a lot here, okay, so if we bet, we bet large a lot. I, I can live with that. And then the turn. We check. Or bet small, okay? All in is, is, is bad, okay? I can live with that. So. Our largest sizing we use here. Is twenty-two blinds, fifty percent. I guess we can just give up some rivers, right? If we miss, I mean. Okay. He also had ace five by the way. Now you said that, I can't even hear it? What is wrong then? Please specify then what's wrong, because I, I couldn't hear it. Hey Binky. Welcome. We just fucked up a spot, we're gonna move on to the next hand. Queen ten offsuit, button versus cut off. I think we mostly continue and I think it's a mix between betting and calling. Yeah, I owned him a little bit, you shouldn't call me there. I think I like a three bet a lot here, and sometimes a flat. Mostly three bets, because this had this fight, three bet fold, right, we're not, we're not. We're not throwing away that much equity if they jam on us, we can just fold. I like, I like a three bet here. We could also fold, to be honest. Against the tight opener, but against GTO, we'll probably have to, uh, do something. Hmm. Wouldn't, wouldn't be surprised, this is mixed three ray with folding, raising and, uh, calling. We'll see it soon. Uh, we did three bets, we can bet small here? Yeah, right, we are not that deep, it's a dry board. Bet small. Sixty-nine percent, okay. Keeps getting better. Do we just jam this? I would be inclined to bet small again. Also against population. Because we don't really need to build a pot that quickly, because there's still the river to play, so I don't jam. Yeah, check back, I don't know. And there's still one SPR left, so we could bluff jam on us on the river, it's just nice. Uh. We block ten jack. So that means he has a bit of left bluffs in his range. I like a betting, I like a small bet. But maybe that's fishy, I don't know. The question is, do we ever bet small here as a bluff? If I have ten jack myself, I probably jam, right? So to balance that, we should probably go all in or check, hmm, interesting. Against population, I think I'm fine betting small here. To get value from a nine X or, you know, any pair, any draw. Uh, if I jam here, you know, overplay my hand a little bit, it feels. But I would, I would lean towards betting small. Oh wow, we're good. Eighty-nine percent, wow. It was the right, uh, option. I'm, I'm kinda surprised, we made quads as well, by the way. Not that that really matters, but we made quads, um. So on the turn, we do bet small most of the time, we never jam, cool. Cool, cool, cool. Yeah, I, uh, Mister Carbs, I heard it too, but I asked for specifics, but. I didn't hear it on my phone. But I have to admit, I only listened for two seconds. Hey, we made quads, uh, chat. Can we, can we see the runout again? Why can't I see the runout again? I wanna make quads again. But if I, if I click play here, it will, uh, do a, a different runout. It will give me a different river, so, doesn't matter. It will give me a different river, so it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Alright, um. King, queen offsuit versus the low jack. Uh, we would jam against the later positions, right? Against the button, it's a clear jam. Against the cutoff, it's probably a clear jam. I'm leaning towards more calls against the low jack. I'm, I, I don't know. Lil Akira likes a jam. Moose likes a jam. I wouldn't be surprised if it's mixing. But I would, yeah, again, I would, I would jam against cutoff and button, don't get me wrong. Insta-jam. Hijack and low jack a little bit less. It's mixed, chat. We can all get points here, I think. If the other option was jam. Okay, X gap. Well, we'll, we'll see. Um. Kind of have to call with your overcard, eh? Kind of have to call with your overcards, even without spades. We need seventeen percent equity realization. Yep. And then, uh, yeah, I mean, the four is not really helping anybody. We do bet on the four, what the hell? We have five, we have five-three in our range, I guess. That's interesting. That's interesting. So pre-flop was fine. It's mixing between calling and jamming against the low jack. Which means I think against hijack, it still mixes and against cutoff, probably a prior jam, my guess. Uh, we never have any, any three bets. And then, uh, the flop. What did we do on the flop? Oh, we check called, which is, uh, yeah, totally fine. Oh yeah, I was wondering the turn, because the four of, the four, it's kinda good for us apparently. We should, uh, bet this sometimes. Well, sometimes, we should bet forty-seven percent of the time. On this turn. Because we, uh, we hit this four more than our opponent. Because we do call five-three suited from the big blinds. And maybe six-four of. Hearts? So yeah, the four hits us a little bit better than the low jack. That's why we have some leads, which is quite interesting. Yeah, so auto remove, hmm, would have worked. Sorry, chat. Sorry, mods. I gave you a chance. Then I had to step in anyway. They'll, they'll learn someday, Binky. They'll learn someday. I, I'm patient with them. I keep explaining X Masonic Songs is, uh, for Nightbot. But then you always need the ID. And for dogbed bot commands like auto remove, you need no ID. You only need a word of, a part of the song. That's, that's the, the, the trick to remember, to remind. Uh, X gap folds here. Yeah, I kinda like it. Kinda like it. Um. We would continue against the cutoff and button. With some jams probably and maybe make some calls. Hijack, low jack, yeah, I guess I like fold. You're dying your hair. What color today? What color today? Ooh, we only ten percent fold. Ninety percent call. To be fair, it's not a huge mistake, I think, if we would do this in game, but. It's not really easy to play king ten offsuit post flop. Against a pretty strong open range in the low jack, right? I'm kinda surprised it's still ninety percent calls. But that's high to me. Yeah, I'd, I'd also fold that. But, uh, hey, we're looking at GTO spots here. Quick break? Hey, we are, we are back already. Gonna do like thirty more minutes of this or so. Kinda enjoying it. Hope you guys enjoying it too. Muffin Man! The muffin man, okay. Hey, Killingbird, how you doing, my friend? Shout out to you. We are continuing the GTO wizard, uh, part of the stream. I would continue calling here. With king nine suited and then fuck my life on this board. I think against the large c-bet, we just fold this. We're not really deep enough to continue with this, I think. Against a one-blind bet, I think we continue ahead like this with the runner hearts. But I think it's just a fold. Nice. Nice! Checkmark. Uh, ace ten offsuit versus under the gun. I'd be very inclined to fold this and continue only ace jack offsuit. But what I remember, I think ace ten offsuit is continuing here. I did some studying, chat. I think this is a continue in GTO land, but I don't, I don't love it. Should we three bet it then? Because we blocked his ace X. Not in love with this, but I, I think it's mixing between calling and three betting. Okay, I might be right. I might be on to something. I might be on to something. Uh, it's a good board for us. But we are up against a pretty strong range, right? Under the gun, open and then calls my three bets. Looks like we're against the cutoff or something. But I think our range advantage might be lower because of that, because we still have aces and jacks. We might call jacks sometimes, right? Think jacks calls versus a three bet sometimes? I'd, I'd certainly bet, but I think small is fine. Alright. This is, this is tough now, you know? We'll look at, uh, what, what's the most choice, uh, most option choice, but I think it was smaller, because I did, small was pretty high chosen. Um. You often see that you size down in three bet pots, right? Because the pot is already so big. Um. Normally a spot where you have range and nut advantage, you would bet two thirds or something. But then in three bet spots, you wouldn't, because the pot is already so big, so we sized down a bit. Uh, I don't love this. This jack is better for him than for us, right? He's gonna have some king, jack suited, maybe that plays this way. Jack ten suited. Not that many combinations, of course. But in general, the middle card is better for the caller than for the razor. So I think I like a check back here. With this hand. Still fifty percent, of these fifty percent. And if they check again, we go for value here. Um. I'd go small again. Like maybe we can cut a call from ace nine suited, ace eight suited? It's really thin, though. It's really thin. Maybe I, I could also see a check back here. I could see a check back or a small bet here. But what are we targeting? A jack is beating us, a flush is beating us. Ace queen, he could have ace queen for sure, calling a three bet pre. He has quads in his range. It's not, not likely, okay? So we're targeting like pocket tens, but we block that? Pocket eights, pocket nines? Ace eight suited, ace eight, ace nine suited. That's basically what we're targeting here. It's pretty thin, right? Let's go with my gut and check. Hmm. Too nitty. So let's look at the sizing on the flop first. So mostly, uh, mostly twenty-five percent. And a bit of checking as well. Mostly twenty-five percent, mostly small. And then on the turn, when we, uh, the jack pairs, I decided to check back. Which was fine. Other option is to bet fifty percent. Alright. And then the river, I was, uh, I talked myself into a check back. Which apparently was still a, 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 a bet, a large bet. That surprises me. Eighty-three percent of the time, we're supposed to bet eighty-four percent of the pot. Twenty-two big blinds, wow. And it's probably to accommodate our, like, nuts here, right? We have ace jack. We have flushes, like. Those want to bet big as well. So in GTO land, we need some, uh. We need some hands to like also bet big. I don't, I don't know. That is, that, is that the thinking? Nonsense, says Binky. But what I am saying or what GTO is doing? To be honest, against population, I'm probably fine with a, a small bet here on the river, right? I, I would not be afraid to get exploited big time if I bet small on this river. So I would do that in game. But my question was, what, what does GTO do here, right? And GTO bets big. But that surprised me, yeah. But it surprised more people, so. Yeah, I did check. I did check. So we look at what, what our whole, what our whole range does. On this river. So on this river, after another gun checks again. This is our whole range. So we check back kings, queens, tens, nines, eights. That makes a lot of sense. Lots of ace X. Ace ten offsuit mixes between checking and betting. So then our, our big value hands are ace jack, aces. Uh. We don't even, we don't even have trips a lot here. That's why, that's why I checked the turn. I knew we didn't have that many jack X in our range. That's, that's correct here. Uh, so that's cool. And our bluffs come from, uh, queen nine suited, queen eight suited. Uh. Which suits? Doesn't really show here. Oh, it shows here, right? Um. All the suits, okay. I don't wanna dive, dive into that too big time. Oh yeah, I didn't look at that. Uh. It's, it's interesting to look at the EVs indeed. They're all the same, is, yeah. Very similar, even checking has the same EV, yeah. Wow. So yeah, so the only reason to bet this big is to protect your range for, in other spots, like. But this only adds variance, right? If, if checking is the same EV? Of course, I guess population, we can also deviate, but interesting. Interesting. Let's move on. Um, I fold. Ace ten offsuit was close, similar spot. King ten offsuit is a tad weaker. We fold. Let's go, or let's skip, turn off the video. Nice. No discussion needed there. Ace seven offsuit against the button, I think is prefers to jam a lot. Playability is not that great. Um. Does he fold ace eight, though? Probably not, if we, if we jam as wide as this, he probably calls ace eight. But I think jamming. Oh, that's not the great, that's not great apparently. Hmm, interesting. So we mostly call and we have some three bet faults as well. And some jams. Basically everything, and again, same EVs for all of that. Um. But mostly calling, mostly just calling. This is a spot that comes up a lot, right? Big blind defense against twenty blind, big blind open, button open. Button opens this range. Uh. Does it? No. Oh yeah, we have limbs, yeah. We have limbs here, whatever. Uh, this is the big blind's response. So yeah. I'm on the right track here, chat. It's not really bad to jam an offsuit ace. Look at this range. We jam a lot of offsuit aces. But specifically ace six, ace seven, ace eight is in the middle, prefers calling. And we jam all our pocket pairs at two jacks. Uh, that's interesting. And this is probably because. We also get called by the better ace X if we jam these. And with jamming these, we can still make these fold. Right? If we jam ace deuce, ace six might fold. But if we jam ace six. All these hands are calling, so we don't get better aces to fold. Is that the basic idea here, why this middle impart completes and not jams? I think so. I think so. Pocket threes, I would always call. Okay. Hey, I'm on camera! That's how I look at GTO players. That's my, that's my stare down to GTO players. Uh, on this board, I'd be inclined to at least call once here. It sucks, but. We can also check raise. But, hmm. And then, do we then lead on this deuce? Uh, interesting. I feel like we have lots of ace threes, uh, in our range, some slow bet four X. Maybe some, even some three-six suited. Nah, that doesn't call the small blind. I'm not sure. Yeah, we do bet some, uh, we bet, we do bet there. Okay, I fucked that up post flop. Guess we bluff catch here. No, we not. I think I did everything wrong from the turn on there. So on the turn, we're supposed to, uh. We're supposed to bet quite often. It's quite of a good card for us. Uh, that's okay. And then on the river. We should, uh, bet and not check, not check call. Uh, it's also, it's also in, uh, the spot is not, uh. Not GTO land anymore. We're deviating into wild territory here. The wild, wild west of poker. Uh, I would consider three betting here. Nice. Let's play a three bet pot out of position. This is what we love to do. This is what we, what we came to study. Uh, I think five blinds. I think five. I think small c-bet on a king three three. Get check raised. Don't think we continue with this one. Oh, we do? Well, well, sometimes? Wow. So three betting is totally fine and the flop. Be mixed between folding, calling and raising, yeah. That's super useful. Let's mix everything. Against the check raise, that is, though. We, we, we do everything. We fold, call and raise. I would never raise here, by the way. That is insane. It's also lower EV than calling. But why do we need it? If it's lower EV than calling, why are we raising against the check raise here with ace high? GTO land is wild sometimes. You would never do that, right, chat? If you get check raised today's jack here, do you, do you re-jam, re-raise? I wouldn't. I wouldn't. But call is the highest EV, so I guess we should have called. Calling is better than folding. Against. A player that is balanced enough to have lots of three bets here that don't only have king X and three X in their range. Well, he doesn't have that many three X anyway, but. Our opponents probably have no, uh, raises a lot there, right? It's not a check raise, by the way. Just a raise in position. Confusing stuff. Let's call with deuces. I guess we like a free card. Is that a thing here? I mean. With the good shot and already having a pair, a free bet, we wanna get action from much better. I'm not, I'm not aggressive enough for these type of spots with weak pairs. My mind always goes, oh, we have showdown value, but. It's really hard to showdown, uh, deuces, especially on ace high board. But that's why we, uh, we bluff with it as well. Okay, we shouldn't fold either. Wow, this is bad. So where did we go wrong? On the flop? Uh. We don't check back. Well, twenty-five percent of the time, but we bet a lot here. Bet a lot small. I mean, I know, we have the good shot and we have runner spades, even have a straight flush draw winner. I don't feel comfortable doing it against the cutoff, though, because of the ace, but. Oh, well. Still fine to bet here, chat? Everybody knows. I'm the only one that doesn't know. Everybody knows. Um. I think this is close. But I, I earlier said, uh, the, the thresholds for calling in the button against any open spot is suited eights. Against cutoff is suited sevens. Uh, only problem is that we're a little short. But that might make it a fold again. But deeper stacked, we complete suited sevens here, I think. But this is close. Let me ask chat, would you call here? In-game, I would also fold, by the way. In-game, I would also. In-game, I would also fold, but I think GTO is very close. Very close defending here. I'd like to have forty blinds though. I think from twenty blinds... We do value high cards better, right? Yeah, the blinds can both still jam. We all have twenty blinds here. Let's fold. Okay, nice. Let's take a look at the range if we're not completely mad, though. I mean, I am completely mad, but... Yo, Ytante, we always need help. Uh... So yeah, against the cut-off raise, it's suited eights basically. Uh, jack seven suited is not even close. Well, close-ish, but... Not even close. Let me look at the bigger stacks if I made some sense with my, uh... Can we do that here? Uh... Forty blinds? Yeah, forty blinds. It's... Still, jack seven suited is a bad option. But we defend most suited sevens. So it's not a complete misread what I said there. Button versus cut-off, that is. Those are the losers' ranges, right? Cut-off opens, but button continues. Almost all the suited sevens. Yo, Poker Joker! And Ytante, welcome, welcome! Aces, baby! Shall we three-bet? I'm good, Ytante. I have a new keyboard! And it's Rylus! And I'm happy with it. Uh, that's kind of interesting. Um, of course, we c-bet this flop, but we'll see what happens. Of course, we c-bet, I said. Maybe the sizing is wrong. Yeah, it said on the, it said on the... Um... On the box that the batteries can last like a year? But yeah, I'll make sure. It always happens when you don't, uh, need it, right? I'd just call here, yeah. And then we start bluff catching turn and river, I guess. Um... Do we ever jam it in here? So we c-bet flop, we get check raised, and now we bet small. There is some merit in jamming here. We block his flush draws a little bit, his hearts. Uh, eight-nine has lots of value here that might call us. Like, what gets here, like, except some stats? Yeah, it's for value mostly, Ytante. We need some protection against eight-nine suited. Like, that has quite a bit of outs and odds. Outs and odds, baby. Um... A seven is probably folding though. But yeah, combo draw, score, yeah, like eight-nine suited, ten jack of hearts, things like that. Um... But there's not that many nasty rivers though. There's not that many nasty rivers. But it might just be for value. Might just be a jam for value. Yeah, I'll make sure I have backup batteries, Marty. To be fair, if it happens, I still have my laptop that I can type on if I really need to, right? So if I'm in a big hand or something, I always have the backup laptop keyboard that I can use. So that's always not a... That's still annoying if I'm streaming because it's not in the right spot. But I could still handle, I could still panic handle it. I like call-call, Ytante. I like call-call. I'm just wondering about the sizing. Like, if it's bigger, I'd call for sure. And I know GTO likes to call-call with overpass like this a lot because you just, you just want to bluff catch as well. Just want to make them bluff the river if they miss their hand. Which is more value than trying to get it in early. Um... Fall Guy's song. I'm gonna skip the Fall Guy's song. Okay, well, let's call. Let's follow Ytante. Okay, it's mostly calling. And, uh, now the question, do we river, bet for value? Yeah, well, yeah, of course, if we call the turn, uh, of course, we want them to bluff the river. We have the ideal bluff catcher, right? We do want to bluff, make him bluff the river. Uh, I think we just call here. Um... It's a bit weird that he doesn't jam for forty-five into sixty-nine, right? The question is, against recreational, I might jam because he's not folding tens, jacks, queens, right? So against recreational, I might min raise for value because he's so committed. But, uh, GTO land probably just calls, yeah. I kinda agree with that. Oh my god! The river is a min raise all-in, a hundred percent of the time. Interesting. We fucked that up! No, not really, but not really. Uh... Ah, good night, Storm! Yeah, you live, uh, you're also sleeping when I'm streaming. But sometimes, uh, I'm still on when you wake up. Have a good night, Storm. Thanks for tuning in. Uh, so the flop, we, uh, the flop was fine. What do we look at, the turn? Yeah, so the question is, the turn, do we sometimes raise? Yeah, we do sometimes raise. But mostly call. I mean, I think it's fine. It's fine. The biggest takeaway is that even GTO goes all-in for that last bit of value on the river. And, you know, they get such a good price. They cannot fold a pair, basically, like... They only need to call twenty-two blinds more into one forty or something. They get like seven to one. So that's probably why he can go wide for value only with one pair, because he's so committed. Uh, this is a bit too weak to call, especially with this stack size. I'd probably start calling like eight-nine suited or something, seven-eight suited. And the call is in the default is neat fine. Blind versus blind. Lots of different spots we're getting today. Um... I would not be surprised if this is a high-frequency jam. Forty blinds though. It's not, it's very big, but... We can't really make it nine, right? That's out of the question. Call or jam is the options here. Whenever folding or min-raising, I think, or anybody. Yeah, make sure you check out GTO Wizard, man. I'm doing these free lessons every week, mostly weeks anyway. You can also, uh, you can also, uh, watch them back on YouTube. No, we never fold here, I think. Yes, use my link. Always use my link. I actually made some money with it as an affiliate, uh... Yeah, call or jam, is what I said. I hate jamming for forty blinds, but especially these pairs, don't want to really, uh, play post-flop, so... Let's jam, chat. It's wrong! It scares you, but it's standard sizing, Lilakia. In that spot, out of position is standard, so this shouldn't scare you too much. Okay, it's a hundred percent call. Wow. That surprises me. That surprises me. That is always a call here and never a raise. Let's check the ranges here. So small blinds, uh, makes a standard raise with three-point-five blinds with all the red hands. And yes, it's fucked up mixed. Don't worry too much about it. Um, in-game, what I try to do is I focus a lot on raising these types of hands. The ace, king, fi, this portion. Uh, and I limp call a lot with suited hands. I don't perfectly implement this because it's impossible, and I'm trying to like bluff a lot with these high cards of suit ones. What I probably should do more is also use these... For value, I do this a lot anyway. Like the suited broadways, I also do that. But I don't do this part. I never really do this with suited hands on this side. Interesting. But against that three-point-five, this is the big blind's response. Funny how we fold seven deuce suited, eh? Even the suited seven deuce is not good enough here. Um, so we have no jams, basically. We have no jams. We start raising tens in the pair department. I'm kinda ignoring these fives and sixes, whatever. But it's about the broad horistics, right? We call all until eights and nines. I'd be very inclined to raise with nines and eights, blind versus blind. Very inclined to raise with nines and eights. Interesting, right? We don't, uh, we don't raise that much. We don't raise that much here. He had ace king, the bastard. Okay, makes sense. We were ahead. Uh, yes, Ytante. Yeah, I think it showed like a very small percentage of jams with like fives. So not really important. It was mostly call or three-bet small. Uh, yes, I would raise. Well done, Ytante. He had this spot, uh, five, fifteen minutes ago already. Uh, very good flop, but it's also a bet small. That's what I would do a lot here with our missed hands as well. Alright. We could check. I mean, we block a lot of their container range, which is annoying, but we could check. Should we check the turn? It's such a boring board, right? It's so dry. There's some gut shots, but that's it. Um... Nine-ten makes an open ender, I guess, but... Doesn't have that many nine-ten. I think I'd like a check here. Okay. And then we go for value, I guess. Or would GTO ever check raise here, chat? So if he has a king, he's betting anyway, right? Because if he check here, a king is betting anyway. And then we can check raise. So that's great. Uh, does he have bluffs here that we want him to bet with? Obvious bluffs. Like a queen ten of hearts or something? Seven nine of hearts? Seven ten of hearts, things like that? If he calls that versus our three-bet pre, probably not, so... It's really tough to find bluffs for him here, right? Although I would like a check here because, uh... Against the king, we don't care, right? A king is gonna bet if he check. Uh, and gonna call if he bets, but we don't lose value by checking because the king is betting. Um, but he lose value if he's checking back a hand that he would call me with. Like ace eight? Ace six? Why do we want to bet big? What do we want to get called by? Like, if he has a king, he's gonna call my big bet. Or a weaker jack. So yeah, that's the portion of the range we're targeting if you bet big here. Uh, and I like that. You gotta try to bet big with your good hands. It's high in our range. No, no, no. I'm thinking out loud, why should we consider checking here, Bulletz? I'm trying to think outside the box here. If a king always bets for us... Um, then we don't lose value with checking against the king. Right? So if we don't lose value by checking against the king, because we can check raise all-in then... And a jack is also betting, right, if we check? A king or a jack is betting for us if we check to them. We don't lose value. We only lose value if he's checking back like an eight or pocket tens or something. Um... So maybe I'm overthinking this, but that's what GTO trading is also for. Um... Yo, Kiribas, welcome to the stream. We don't have the nuts. We have a very strong hand. Too many checking. But you're not really responding to why I'm trying to check here sometimes, Bulletz. You're not really responding to my explanation. I'm gonna go for my gut and check. It's wrong. Of course it's wrong. Of course it's wrong. But I was just trying to find an out-of-the-box, uh, check here. It's even an overbet all the time. That surprises me too. It's always the overbet all-in. It's always the overbet all-in. But is six, is a six calling? If we all call in? I'm still not convinced in-game this is the best play. And I tried to give my explanation for it. If he has a king or a jack, he's betting the river. He's not gonna check back. We don't lose any value against top pair or trips. We're not losing any value against those hands because we can check raise all-in. But yeah, an eight x, a six x, a pocket pair, you know, those hands... We lose some value if he checks back, what happened in this case. I'm getting owned by GTO here, but I still like my explanation of why checking could be good here. Maybe I'm stubborn though. Because in general, we want to bet a lot, especially against opponents who check a lot. And let's do a couple more hands, and I think it's time to move on to something else then. We did ninety minutes, or less, a little bit less than ninety minutes, pretty cool. Defend king ten of suits. I think we continue here. We have two overcards and a runner straight draw. And it's only a small bet, so I think we continue. Do we check raise sometimes? It is a board where we, uh... Yeah. Classic re-raise spot. Could be, for sure. We block his ace, king, kings and tens. We can wrap something like, uh, ace nine, a nine, eight, uh... Yeah, I like a raise, but I don't like ten blinds. We can also go seven. Do we go seven? Nope. We don't go seven. Fold mostly, but raise to five, okay. Never calling, wow. We do check raise sometimes. We don't have to feel too bad, Ytante. We do check raise sometimes. But the sizing was wrong. I'll take it. I also prefer raising to calling there, to be honest. Um... Kinda close, but I'd fold against under the gun. Sorry, I have to immediately check this. Nine-seven suited, okay, on the border. I literally said earlier, suited eights always continue against any spot. Just simple reminder, suited eights always continue. I know that. But I forgot! Suit connectors are a different story. Uh, it's really, uh, it's really not super interesting, but in GTO land, we should call nine-seven suited. But I don't feel too bad for folding it. I don't feel too bad for folding it. This is a call. This is a fold. Call. Buh! Bu-buh, bu-buh, bu-buh! It's the flop you don't want to see, eh? I'm trying to click a bit faster to the easier ones. This is not the easy one. Uh, certainly playing. I think jamming is a little bit crazy. I think I like a three-bet. But a call is not too crazy either. Because we do hate three-bet folding this. Maybe we three-bet call ace queen suited? And we just play this one as a call? Against cut-off and high-deck, I would certainly three-bet. But against under the gun, I think I like a call. But it's probably mixing some raises. Nice. I like that. I like that we're on the right track there. So we have our best ace here. Because we would three-bet ace king. Um... Hmm, the small c-bet though. I kinda wanna call and just make him bluff his, uh, king nine suited on the turn, right? Hmm. Yeah, bet your king nine of hearts. Okay, he checks now. I guess we bet the turn. Um, if he bet five, pot becomes twenty. And we have twenty-one left-ish, so we have pot-sized bet left. Kinda good sizing. Could also go larger. Seven point eight is more geometric here. Because if he calls, then the pot is twenty-six, and we have eighteen left. This is more geometric. I'm trying to sound smart here. Nice! I played that very well. Thank you. Suited eights in a small blind is a defense against every position. I don't want to raise this, so it's a call. Hey. Interesting check raise spot, maybe. But I don't like this board. Like, the board hits this... But I don't like this board. Like, the, the board hits this range too big. But we do have a gut shot and a runner hard, so. To quote some kind of Yatante. Could be a classic three-bet spot, uh, re-race spot, right? We have draws and runners. But it's not the right board for it. Maybe on an, uh, on a king-ten-seven, we do that or something. Um. So I think I just call here. We can't really fold gut shots for the small c-bet. We, we need fourteen percent equity. We might not realize all of that, but then still. We cannot fold gut shots. And we have a runner flush draw. Okay. We called flop that it takes turn and the river. Uh, that it takes back the turn, sorry, and the river, we don't know yet. Do we ever bluff this? On this board? I'd, I'd, I'd incline to be, I'd be inclined to give it up. Because he can still have an ace, a king. So many easy bluff catchers, I think. I'd be talking like it's under pairs or something, like if he c-bets deuces, then he folds deuces, right? Or maybe something like ten-jack. Ten-nine could fold. Like, I tend to, I, I lean towards giving up. It's wrong! But we did, we did okay, but the river is a lead. It's a bluff. Yep. Mostly for a half-pot-ish. Interesting. So we should bluff this. But I guess we blocked jack-queen. We blocked sort of his straights a little bit. Suited eights in a small blind, is it continue? It's always, uh, continuous, so it must be three-betting sometimes. Uh, I'll, I'll look it up. Jump raise to call. Yeah, baby. Uh. Call? Overbet. But we can't fold, uh, top pair on the turn here, I think. So I'm gonna cry call and decide on the river. So far, we played it perfectly. But this is the problem. And this would be a problem against recreationalists. Big time, because they don't find enough bluffs. So I think we might fold this. In-game, against. A regular eleven-dollar opponent, right? But against GTO, we might find some calls, and then the question is, is our blocker a good kicker or not? Our, our, no, is our kicker a good blocker or not? I think that's the question here in calling or not. So we want him to have ten-jack. No, no, he bet all streets. He bet all streets, Yatante. Single raise pot, bet, bet, bet. So we want them to have ten-jack. We want them to have seven-eight. We want them to have ace-king. Uh. I, I think our blocker is really neutral here, like, we block seven-eight. But seven-eight's not opening under the gun a lot, like, yeah, only eight-seven suited. So that's not a huge deal. I don't know, man, this is tough. I, in-game, I'd lean towards folding because there, people are too value-heavy, I guess. Um, but in, in GTO land, I think we defend. He could still do this with, uh, king-five of hearts or something. Yeah. Yeah, maybe, maybe even, uh. A ki-king-ten, king-ten of hearts, king-ten of diamonds. King-ten of spades. King-jack of spades, king-ten of hearts, king-ten. There's lots of gut shots as well that he can do this with on the flop and the turn. King-jack, king-ten, jack-ten. Uh, yeah, and the fun thing about GTO is, even if he cannot find the bluffs, he will have them. The question is not if he has enough bluffs, because if we're playing against CTO, we know it's balanced. And, uh, because he's betting, he's betting the pot. He's bluffing here, uh, one time out of three roughly, and value two times out of three. And we need to, we need to rewrite one and three to, uh, go here. Yeah, he should have two times value, one time, uh, bluff. That's the, that's the definition of a pot-sized bet, basically. Um, because if he call. Uh, if he bluff catch one and three, we should break even. Okay, it's a call. Cry call. He played the hand perfectly. Ace-five of clubs. I'm surprised that he uses ace-five of clubs, though. Because that doesn't do anything on the flop or the turn. There's no semi-bluff in there. It's just ace-five of clubs. The only thing it does, it's, it unblocks my flush draws. That'll brick on the turn anyway, because there's no, no draws, but. So, my theory is. Do I have a theory? Have you, likely. Uh. On the river. If under the gun goes all-in. This should be. One-third bluffs, two-thirds value. Um. So we have quads, full houses, overpairs. Top pair. As value, and then we bluff with. Where's my low pair? Ace-deuce. Some ace highs. It's really hard to find enough bluffs here. So ace-five suited is like a real big portion of our bluffs here. Just because they have, they have no other bluffs. That's so funny. Under pairs never, Yatante. He never has under pairs this way in this line. Apparently. But ace-king sometimes bluffs as well. So ace-king, ace-five. And some king-jack, king-ten that I mentioned, so that's okay. No jack-ten either. Jack-ten checks. I'm confused. I'm confused. Let's end on a nice hand, Ted. Let's do one, let's do a couple more. Uh. Going away. Oh, I already moved on, but it's, but six is river to set, so. Six is, uh, made a full house. That's why, probably. I think this mixes between calling and raising, but it's, uh, very playable hand. Yeah, the rest is three-bets, I guess. So we call, we check to the razor. This is a very cool check raise spot, right? We, we have a runner royal draw. But what can we, what can, what more can we ask for? What more can we ask for? A royal draw? Okay, uh, it's not GTO, what I did. It's not GTO. Now I'm angry. Should I just jam? But this is, uh, and. This is not a GTO solver, solver land, so. We don't really stand still bad, but what I will stand still by is the flop. So we do, don't do that. We call, or we call a lot, we call a lot. We don't fold, we call. A king-four with the runner royal draw, we're supposed to just call, never bluff, never bluff raise. This probably, we, we had similar spot earlier like this. Probably fold sometimes and three-bet sometimes. C-bet small, give up after that. Yep. Was I right about pre-flop? Oh, we don't fold. We call or raise. Okay. Okay. Okay, Ted, I think we did enough. Made it almost two hours. Think we did enough. My brain is getting fried. How did we do? Average. I'll take average. These were some tough spots, some three-bet spots. Some spots where I didn't agree with GTO either. Seventy-six percent is not too bad. It's not too bad. Uh, we learned some stuff. We had some fun. Uh, this is where the GTO.